This was, uh, this was an item that obviously you guys have discussed previously. And Ms. Montenegro is here to have a conversation with you.
Hi, how is everybody tonight? Good. I thought it would be easier to just have a face-to-face meeting on this, just to go over this and understand what between those sides where we're at and all of that. So I'm just here to discuss with you and I did watch the I did watch the previous meeting with the discussion and I just wanted to clarify on the car. I'm not asking for a car. I just asked, is there a car that the city has? And being able to claim mileage, I'm, I'm fine with that. So it's not that I need a car. I just thought it's usually if there's not a car allowance that's included, then there's a vehicle that you can use. But that's not the case here and that's okay. I'll just claim mileage on that. So that's that. And then during my last appointment, I know you guys stated that you're concerned about severance and the length of severance. To begin with, that you've had issues in the past. I as well have had issues in the past. So we're on both sides of this. And I would like to counter back and ask you if you would consider doing for the first three months, do a three-month severance. And then after that, in the first 90 days, you should be able to get to know me better and have a feel for how things will work out with me. And then bump it up to the six months. I understand you don't want to be left holding the bag and all that kind of stuff. I don't either. So it's a lot for me. I am choosing to come down here and rent a place during the week so that I can be here fully immersed in the community as closely as possible. So I do have that additional expense every month coming on to me. So and then the other thing that I wanted to ask about was the vestment of retirement. And I know that I'm comfortable with the amounts that you guys have. I know I had asked for 10%, but between the 5% and the one and the 4% and you guys are right in the ballpark. So I'm good there. But I still would like to be vested. And I know that that's an additional cost for you guys, but I wanted to know, is that a cost that's annual or is it a cost that's just a one-time cost to set it up? What's the cost associated with that? And would you consider that? Because if something happened, like in my last place, I was there 97 days, I would lose whatever I contributed to the city at that point in time. Because I hadn't been vested in.
No, you get, ours is that you get your money back.
I get my money back.
If in MERS, you're, you would get your 5% back. You just wouldn't get the city portion.
Right. I wouldn't, but I wouldn't have gotten the city's match. That's, that's what I'm trying to say. So my part would still be in there, but I want to make sure that the city's, whatever you contribute is in there too. So is there a cost that's associated? I'm sorry.
It's okay.
It's okay.
But I'll check on that.
Yeah. And I know you were concerned about health insurance. I, we're just coming up on, we just celebrated 19 years. We've been together 21 years. I went through a divorce once. I, I will die before I go through another one because they're awful to go through. And I don't foresee anything happening. Of course, I'm not God. I can't say one way or the other definitively, but I don't, I don't know how else to say this other than to just, I'm usually very transparent, very honest. So it's just who I am. I think there's value in the service that I provide. And it concerns me that if something did happen that you would want to renegotiate my contract at that point in time. I would hope that the value that you get from me, you would want to keep me at that same salary and we would work to work around that otherwise. But I'm excited to start working and I wish I could start tomorrow, but I know we still have to do the contract language itself. It's just, as you have been burned, so to say, I have too. So we're both trying to protect each other and I'll stop talking now and then let you all comment on that and see where we're at.
The floor is open with all the discussion that we had before.
I had one question, but I think I asked you if, if you're waiving health insurance, we still provide it.
Oh, you did. Okay.
There was a contribution to the HSA which would have, had you taken the health insurance, that would have been part of that benefit. So that, that part was taken out.
No, the HSA is the Health Savings for Retirement. That's a health savings account for retirement, the HSA. All new employees get that for retirement because they don't get medical for retirement.
Okay. Well, then I stand corrected. The HSA goes back in 3%.
And is that a match too?
No.
That's just a city?
Yep.
Can somebody contribute or no?
No.
Sorry, you're saying he wouldn't accept the contract if we didn't want, if we want to renegotiate if God decides that you get a divorce?
It'd be more likely if my husband died unexpectedly, you know, and therefore lost his job. And he works for the state of Michigan, is in a real critical role there. Not that that doesn't happen, but they really like him. So I don't foresee that happening. It would be, you know, something catastrophic that would have to happen to him that would preclude my ability to have insurance screwed in or prevent. I just, it's something that let's jump off that bridge together if we get there rather than, you know, putting that up as a wall that I won't do that. I just would hope that you would see the value that I would bring here and my skillset would bring to the community. If it's something you choose to do in the future, then we walk that road and determine at that time, do I stay? Do I go? If it's something you want to lower my, my salary by, but it's a decision that, that you'd have to be comfortable with as well. So.
I think I was the one originally brought that up. The only reason why I brought that up was because we made a big belief in terms of the salary.
Right.
That we were originally anticipating. And so I just asked that a question just to figure out what would happen.
Okay.
Looking at all the different angles. So.
Right. And hopefully some of the things that I can bring in, skills that wise our funding within grants and just things to help us as, as we move forward to do projects and I'm very much, very aware of that. But I also believe in my value that I bring to you as well. So.
So, I mean, Scott, question for you. So is this a time for us, since she's here? Are we allowed to kind of go back and forth?
Yeah, that's, that's the purpose of doing it.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody's kind of quiet.
Special meeting every time we decide to convey something different to her. So I think if there's a a general understanding that can be reached as to what the compensation package is, then we can, you know, we can add this agreement to the, the agenda this evening and authorize the, the interim administrators to extend the contract offer to her.
Okay. And we can just authorize the amendments.
Correct. Yeah. So the issues that council needs to discuss to make a decision on is whether or not they're in agreement with the, the desired severance package and then the vesting of the MERS account. So.
I thought we settled the MERS. Or she, our, our touch were okay with the MERS, right? Oh yeah. You want to, you want to be vested. Okay. Okay. So can we break this down? So we need to talk about vesting. We need to go back and forth vesting. And then we also need to go back and forth with marriage. I'm joking.
I don't actually think we can inject ourselves in her marriage.
I'm in a good mood today. Okay. And then what's the last one? We need to talk about vesting severance. And well, that's okay. All right. So all right. So I, it sounds to me with the severance, would everyone be okay with if unforeseen circumstances happen coming to the table to discuss her contract at that moment? Or does it need to be in the contract?
That would seem to be like.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm talking about no, I'm talking about, uh, yeah, the health insurance. I apologize. Yeah. We missed one. I asked you guys.
You're asking for three months and three months and six months and six months.
Um, no, originally I had asked for three months up through the first three months and then six months beyond that, but I'm even willing to do four months at four months, five months at five months, and then at six months, it's six months going forward. However, that helps you, you know, it helps us as well. But as I said, I'm still paying out. Well, I'm not still, I've already paid out, but I had to buy out my lease that I had. So those are expenses I take on in the community that I, that I come to to serve, you know, and, and that would be the same thing that would happen to me here. Unless one of y'all are going to take me in, but I don't want that to happen either. So I mean.
If you're not, you're not asking for a year's worth of three months or whatever. I mean, we will have paid into it and it will go accordingly to.
Right. And then I believe yearly, you guys, at six months, you'll do my first evaluation and then at my full year and then yearly after that, if I understand, and the contract at one year could be renegotiated at that point in time, you know, if, if it's something at that point that you want to do, but those are the things that I would be asking for.
I think I'm fine with the three months, one month, five months, six months. Scale like that.
Does everybody agree? Okay. All right. Now, one thing checked off the list.
But I think the vestments can be a little harder. We have no idea what that's going to cost.
Were you looking into?
Into that was something that you said you had to look into to see what was going to cost for us to.
We have to open and the one person I called hadn't called me back yet, but I, if we had to open a new group, which we probably are going to have to open a new group for the, her because everybody else's is the tier.
Right.
So hers would have to be a new group. So we probably are going to have to, it just depends on you. If we're vested enough to open that group, that's going to be the other thing.
Contract amendment. I mean, once we find that out, because I mean, you know, if it's $5,000 to do that, that's one thing. If it's, you know, $500 to do that, that's, that's, that's another.
I think my suggestion would be is if you were comfortable with creating a separate group, maybe put a not to exceed clause in there. So if it's less than whatever X amount of dollars, okay, if it's over that, well, then we probably should have another discussion about how that's going to.
Do you have any idea how much that might be?
I do that. We have not opened a new group since we opened the last.
We know what, what the fees we pay on the existing group are. How much it costs for that group?
That's just what we're paying unless the investment, they take from the investment. So the interest to that. So we don't see what they're actually until we get them to your final report.
So we don't even have a ballpark.
But mostly it's the defined benefits that's more costly than defined contribution.
Need to be a ballpark. I mean, I don't even know what to throw out.
Exactly. So you don't have no, no idea.
If we haven't, I mean, this has been since 2017, 18 that we opened this group up.
For the hours I know.
I, I have no idea.
No, I mean, I'm just throwing darts.
I mean, I'll be on the phone with them first thing in the morning, but I do know a cost.
I think that that's something that we would have to have somewhat of an idea to even give the negotiation. It's their attorney.
Well, again, I think it's, it's what, what is council comfortable? I mean, what's, what's the breaking point for you? Is it? I mean, if it costs another thousand dollars, is, is that going to put tip scale and, and force you to look elsewhere or renegotiate? Is it 500? Is it 5,000? What is the?
And is it a one-time or an in-house?
Right.
As I get it written down.
And I'm uncomfortable in throwing out a dollar figure because again, I don't know if that's monthly or is that annually? Cause I can't say what's the breaking point. If it's a thousand dollars a year, that's not as much, but if it's a thousand dollars a month, you know, that's, that's something different.
But we could do it as a contract amendment, couldn't we, Scott?
Yeah. Yeah. We could, you know, again, we have, we have some flexibility. Sorry, I'm just adding some of these changes in right now. So we can kind of off, but I mean, I would be shocked if it would cost $12,000 a year and fees for an HSA that we might not even be putting $12,000 into it.
The most costly, they set up the group, but that's, I don't know if you know for sure. I, I don't. Yeah. I think that's when just setting it up. But I know you have to be at a certain vesting level to, for, you know.
You mean fun, funding level?
No, we don't know that one either, right?
We were at 80% last thing.
That was like 10 years ago.
80% of what?
Funded. That's all the groups.
The price was, we don't know.
It's just, I mean, that's the investments and everything funded.
That was fun, funding our pension liability that we did. It probably was seven years ago.
Yeah.
It was right when you got a council. That paid it up to get it to 80%.
Yep. Yep. Yep.
No, no, we were going for, we were going for more than 80% and we had it up there and then they changed.
Then they changed, right. Yeah.
That they, the way they changed their, um, actuarial. And they brought us down.
So let's say you are.
Why don't we just throw something other like a thousand dollar annual and it's less than a thousand dollar annual or it's more than that, then we revisit it.
Thousand dollars is.
The max is a thousand dollars an annual. And the max monthly?
Well, I'd say annual. So.
Yeah. I'm kidding.
No, I'm.
Yeah. Cause I had to kick in for a second.
Talking to myself.
I mean, I guess I'm, I'm, that's not a lot, I guess. So.
So so if we need to revisit it, that would mean we need to revisit at the, our study session?
Or, or so I or is it like, so Sue, it sounds like what council's proposing is they are in agreement with the vesting. So as long as it doesn't exceed a thousand dollars in cost. If it were to exceed a thousand dollars in cost, would you be interested in cost sharing? Or revisiting that provision of your contract?
So if, if it's an annual cost, I understand where you're coming from. If it's a one-time cost to set it up and it's $2,500, is that something that, you know, you're comfortable with or a portion of that is taken from me as well as far as being able to have that vesting completed and do part of that cost sharing, maybe an 80, 20 split, split, split or 70, 30 split, you know, but that would be something that would help alleviate some of the costs to the city. But then it's something that is in place and it's just another thing to put out there for you.
So it's actually two things. It should be a thousand dollars max per year, this annual. And then what's going to be the max if it's just a one-time charge to set it up? What is that going to be?
I would say 2,500 somewhere in the middle.
So not to exceed $2,500 if it's a one-time fee and setup is included in that and then a thousand dollars per year.
And are you agreeing to cost share for the one time or, okay. And she's agreeing to cost share.
And that was an 80, 20 split or we don't?
80, 20 or 70, 30.
Okay.
Split the difference 75, 25.
Okay. And what else?
And healthcare.
I think that's it.
Self, oh, this healthcare is it?
No, I think we've already resolved the healthcare issue. She's not, you're declining coverage, correct?
Yeah, I'm not going to have coverage through you, but my suggestion was if something did happen.
Right. There was discussion. Your salary or we renegotiate your whole contract or whatever. So.
But she's saying she doesn't want it in the contract. She's saying she wants to be able to when that time happens, she wants us to.
Should that time?
Yeah, should they? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Again, I don't think.
He's trying to inject himself into your relationship.
Uh, I think should, shouldn't that event unfold or occur that it needs to be revisited? I think at that time, what she's asking is instead of just putting it into the contract that we're going to renegotiate her contract, just leave it out of the contract and then address it at that point.
Did we put it in the contract? I thought we just answered that as a question saying that.
No, we did. We did not put that in the contract. But it was something that was discussed. So I think just clearing that up and everyone have the same understanding that it's not going to be in the contract. And Sue's saying, and hopefully the value that she brings and adds to the city, it won't be an issue that creates an issue.
Yeah. Okay. So was it, we did our three?
We did all three.
Okay.
What would be next?
Uh, wrap up.
No.
Both out.
Yeah.
So is there a contract that you will?
Yeah.
So should she, should she stay or can she leave?
She's going to stay for the whole meeting. She said, I'd like to stay for both if they're public meetings and like you're uncomfortable with.
No, you can stay.
You pick which side you want to sit on, over here, over there. We'll give you a packet.
Yeah. So.
Definitely get you going.
Thank you for coming. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the opportunity and I, I really do look forward to working with all of you. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So next, what we have is the draft ethics ordinance. And there was something that does addition to it.
No, actually, um, and that was me just going through my emails, catching up, catching up from being off on Friday. I'd received got email with those rules and procedures. I knew they weren't in the electronic version of the, I don't know. So I wasn't um, at that point when I sent it, I wasn't aware that you all received printed copies. So, um, it was updated into the electronic packet, but that's nothing.
Very good.
But I'll let the city attorney take the lead on the latest version of the draft ethics ordinance and updated rules and procedures.
So kind of you. All right. So yeah, we did, uh, this was based off the I can't remember how, last month we met and discussed this. We incorporated some of the suggestions and changes that we discussed. I just wanted to put them together and bring it back to a study session. If there's anything that anyone wants to add or change or discuss more, now, future date, whenever.
Well, I think since we have a new city administrator coming up shortly, I would like her to review this and see if she has anything she'd like to add or subtract or amend.
Have to do it with us. I agree.
She might have some, you know, input from her experience as well. And she might like to see some things in here.
You can do that.
With that, I made this, is where we link it to the procedures. Is that correct?
Yeah. So I didn't.
No, it's not each. There was a yeah, because the city officials and employees will perform their duties in accordance with the processes and rules of order established by state council governing, blah, blah, blah. At this moment, there's other documents, rules of procedure in order.
Yeah, I thought I had, you know, I actually did. I took that, you're right. That is a H is worth that. I had in there reference to the 85 dad 116. But I took that out because that's the other document that you have this evening, which has been updated. The correct that is, that is the reference to the, the resolution established from the laws and procedures.
So you're saying rules and procedures go.
So yeah, it's a set, the rules and procedure is a separate document. Result, that's a resolution, standing resolution. The one that currently council is operating under is from 1985. It hasn't been updated. That's what, that's what Suzie had sent out earlier today.
Um, yeah.
Oh, was it? How did it get printed? Oh, it printed with track changes.
Yeah. Yeah. I think we just need to turn it off.
Nothing to turn it off.
Yeah.
Yeah, Scott, with four dash five, section E. I, I know we talked about this for a while. I just don't remember where we landed. So we, we did land on a, on a public board with no counsel input. We got the way we decided on that for which one, the rules and procedure or are you in?
Which one?
Compliance and enforcement for that five.
Thank you. And then which section?
Are we just ignoring MERS recognition?
Good. Inherently.
No, I mean, she can still get info. We can still talk about it. I mean, I want her input too. But I mean, we can't talk about it now. It's, it's a drive.
Correct.
And we're not, we're not, we're not approving it tonight.
Okay. Go ahead. For the E.
Yeah, that's what we had discussed last time, having a, a board that didn't include council members, especially if it was council members that were subject to the ethic organs violation. And my recollection was that we had discussed appointing the same way we afford, appoint to other committees, that it's a mayor appointment, council confirmation.
I didn't remember exactly what kind of that.
And again, this is a working document. So this is not the last time you'll see it. And, you know, Sue can put it, take a look at it, put a set eyes on it. And if you have some changes or suggestions, we can incorporate those.
All right. So we're going to go through.
It's whatever the preference of the councils.
Was there anything else that anyone's had questions about?
H or confidential information, it's an image about shall neither disclose nor divulge to an unauthorized person confidential information acquired in the course of their duties in advance of the time prescribed for its authorized release to the public without proper legal authorization. What does that mean?
So if there was something that was discussed during a closed session settlement, litigation settlement or anything that could be. A- anything that could be discussed in a, in a closed session, if it was to be discussed or disclosed outside of that closed session, that would be a violation. And, and, and I think we, and I, I didn't say it last time, the reason because that, oh, just did happen, we had a litigation going with the city. Where somehow something we discussed in a closed session of city council. Was presented to the defendant or the plaintiff in that case, prior to my ever discussing it with their attorney. So they, somebody from council had contacted their representative and divulged to them what our, our settlement strategy for that case was. We don't wanna do that.
In page, uh, section half. Use of city property and resources and official or employee shall not use or admit others to use. Any property owned by the city for profit or personal convenience or benefit, except, um, there's some exceptions, but. Does that cover? Use of community facilities and things like that?
Yeah, that, so that would be any, I mean, if, I know there's been some talk about offering discounts on the community room to, to council members or staff. Or we, at one point had talked about, um. Issuing community credits for groups, said, community benefit groups, I don't know that that was ever implemented, but. If it was something that was not available to the general public, on the same terms and conditions, then it, it shouldn't be available to the council member.
Or to. Or to permit others to use it, okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions or clarification that is needed?
Look at some of the rule of order and procedure.
So you're on the other.
I mean, we wanna stand this document, that's fine, I mean.
No, I mean, it's fine, just to, just so we can get through it.
Yeah, Scott.
We, we, can we come back?
Let's finish the one.
On page five. Six, that can save food or refreshments not exceeding one hundred dollars per person. In value on a single calendar day to buy the food or refreshment that I consume on the time between the purchase or most here of favor. For the purposes of this section, here means food or preferred, preferred, blah blah. Hundred dollars per person on a single day, that seems excessive.
But we weren't feeding nobody anyway.
So this is, that, that is, uh, accepted, permitted, that is an exception to the, uh, prohibition against. City officials or employees receiving or accepting gifts from any source, except if it's a less than a hundred dollars worth of food or drink on any. Excuse me, on any particular day, I mean, that, we could change that amount, um. That's just what we had used in, in that other community, so.
Covers anything around here.
Well, we had talked about lowering, but didn't Lee Ann come up with a couple instances where she's. Kinda convinced us to go back, leave it at a hundred, or am I thinking of a different provision?
Um, I don't, I don't recall, and I didn't have any notes on the dollar amount changing, so.
Okay, so that one, and then eight intra, intra governmental and intragovernmental gifts for the purpose of this section. Intra governmental gift means any gift given to an official or employee from another official or employee of the city. And intergovernmental gift means any gift given to an official or employee by an official or employee of another governmental entity. What, um, what would that cover?
So that would, that, again, these are exceptions, so the city of Southfield sent, um, Southfield city council sent over a holiday gift basket. Or something for the city council, that would not be a violation, and you could accept that, that gift from another governmental entity.
And can, can city money be spent on things like that?
City money, uh, public funds should not be spent for anything not used for public, but, so I guess that's a bad example, but, um. Sometimes consultants donate things to governments and they re-gift them. So if you were to receive something, um, that, you know, perhaps they didn't want, or, or I, I'm not really sure, but. Uh, it's probably a bad example, but, um, yeah, if there was something to come from another community, could be a credit to Southfield. Uh, Parks and Rec program or something like that, of that nature, not necessarily, uh, something that's been purchased, but it could also be a service or an opportunity.
And any item or item from any one prohibited source during any calendar year having accumulated total value. Of less than one hundred dollars, why wouldn't you be able to accept anything from a prohibited source?
Well, that, that, again, that would be, um, again, any outside, uh, consultant or something were to. Purchase dinner, uh, for the council, you know, take you out to dinner or something like that, uh, then that would be included in that. That's the one we were talking about, where she suggested leaving it at a hundred, I think.
Any other questions with this particular document?
Respect her process, page five. Section H, you step from product, so which is, well, it says. City officials and employees shall perform their duties in accordance with the processes and rules of order established by city council. Governing the deliberation of public policy issues, meaningful involvement of the public and in the patients' policy decisions by city staff. I don't think that we have options for meaningful involvement of the public. So. Many people can come and speak for two minutes or three minutes and not get answered, there is a meaningful involvement on the public.
We haven't had it, uh, recently, but we have in the past had, uh. Less than meaningful involvement of the public, um, some individuals will come and make statements during public comment that, um, are. Not necessarily things that this body would take up or have any control over. Um, or something that might be contrary to what, uh, is in the best interest of the city, they may come and express that opinion. So, um, again, just because it. Someone addresses it doesn't necessarily mean it has to be, um, action has to be taken, so like, some items, sometimes people just wanna get something off their chest. Or make a position statement.
Well, I get that, but we should have meaningful involvement in public, we don't, so. I don't know, that should be in there, since that doesn't happen. And then conduct of public, public meetings. On section I, city officials and employees participating in public meetings shall prepare themselves for public issues. But that's a little difficult to do sometimes when information is delivered so late. So. Again, I wanna make sure that these things that are in here are things that can be followed and forced.
So there is a, the, in the next document, there is a reference to the timing and the, in the distribution of those documents and the, the. Um, resolution on council procedures, and, and it is at the suggestion of council, the Thursday prior to the Monday, that information be provided.
Right, but that's in place right now, and that's not followed, so. Um, page seven, section E. Not acquiring reasonable suspicion of a violation of the ethics ordinance by. Wire the setting of a public hearing and a regular special meeting in the city council. To determine whether a violation of the ethics ordinance occurred, the public hearing shall be conducted before a three member ethics board, which shall render a decision on the matter. The mayor shall appoint of the board members, who shall be qualified electors of the city after submission and consideration of applications. Such appointments shall then be approved by majority vote of city council. In complaints alleging a violation of this chapter by a member of the council, that member shall not take part in any proceedings related to the complaint as a city council member. Why is the mayor appointing board members and not the whole city council?
Because that's how all, um, members of commissions and boards have, are, have been and are currently appointed, uh, mayor appointment, council confirmation.
I, I thought it's recommend, recommendation by the mayor, not mayor shall appoint?
No, it's mayor appoints, council confirms.
Some of the committees are recommendation, and then the city council approves the recommendation.
Okay, um, a recommendation of appointment and confirmation, or an appointment and a confirmation is the same thing, but we can. We can add the word recommend if you'd like.
Recommending and pointing are the same thing?
If it's subject to confirmation, where else is the recommendation gonna come from? It's still the decision of city council as a body. It's just the mayor is the one making the recommendation or making the appointment, either way, it's one individual coming from the mayor. Or in this case, three.
Moving on to the, um. Rules of order and procedure.
Yes, Scott, move over to section seven, please.
Okay, so this was, um, I know we had talked about a, a flow chart, I didn't know how to make a flow chart, so I just wrote it out, the diff. Um, so there's different, uh, and I tried to keep it as general as possible. When the, when city council members receive a correspondence, I mean, I could just read it, uh, probably easiest way to do it, so. The city administrator, mayor are delegated to the responsibility of handling all correspondence. Under this system, only those correspondence which necessarily requires council's decision on policy will be brought before council meetings. That means if someone says, hey, my trash hasn't been picked up this week, what's going on? That's not a correspondence that necessarily needs to be addressed by city council, it's something that is a, a function of the administration and can be handled administratively. That type of correspondence would just be included in, um, an administrator report. Or, uh, general communications that, that would be included in the consent agenda, so basically the distinction there is, is essentially something that we. Will or could likely deliberate upon. Correct, again, the function of council is to set the policy for the city and the administration is to implement that policy. The correspondence received by all council members via email, which require council decision on a policy, should be acknowledged by the mayor, and these are, this is done. To avoid a potential OMA violation, so if it, if it's sent to everyone on council. Only the mayor should respond within a reasonable timeframe, and then it should be transmitted to the city administrator for inclusion on the next regular agenda. So that that issue can be discussed, whatever that issue may be, at an open meeting with the full body of council, not via email.
Right, two, two, two comments on that, one, one is, I think you should add the word, I respond to only by the mayor. And then the other question I have is, um, where it says correspondence received by all council members, should that be all council members? Or should that be three or more council members?
It should be three or more.
And those same two comments would also apply to the last paragraph as well.
That's really stifling our ability to. Fill our own of office and to work with residents.
The Open Meetings Act is?
I'm sorry?
The Open Meetings Act is stifling?
No, I'm just talking about the Open Meetings Act, in fact, about any of things, uh, if correspondence is sent to. All members. Can't respond officially, but we can talk to our constituents.
You can, but just don't talk to them through an email with everybody on it, or in response to an email chain with everybody on it. And the other, the other reason for that is because one individual council member does not direct the policy of the city. So if one council member may have a different opinion on how that policy may carry out, and they go and convey that to the spread, to a resident. That that resident may have an expectation that this is what's going to happen, and that may not be the reality of what happened. So that's why it's important, if it's an issue that's going to come before council. No one individual council person should be speaking for the entire council until the entire council is spoken.
Well, yeah, should be speaking for the entire council, but certainly speak as an individual.
Again, that's.
There's no point of even sitting up here.
That, that's, so that's more of where if you receive an, in. I think, or a correspondence, or you follow up with an individual, but not, uh, not reply all, and especially not. Uh, to that resident with all the members of council, or more than three.
I'm, I'm not sure that that's. Clear in here.
How would she, how would you suggest making that clear?
At all in any way, so I don't know, we just put in there, here. Respond as the spokesperson of the council.
The, the, the other reason why we put this in place, because I remember back when, when I first got in council five years ago, we had situations where. We would get a, uh, email and then, you know, three different council people an- answer, and then all saying different things.
Right, that's exactly, and, and, that's what I just explained.
Right, uh, well, it's, yeah, it's similar. Which, which is why it's, I think it makes sense only for, what we've been doing, we still have three years, was, you know, we put a lot of comments to the mayor, and the mayor responds.
Because again, the responses to policy issues should, are never decided or determined through email.
Right.
It's something that, it needs to be addressed, it needs to be provided to the administration, so that the administration can. Uh, put it on an agenda or consult with an appropriate consultant, if it's a, a building official i- issue, or if it's an attorney issue. If it's a planner issue, they can then direct it to the appropriate individual or department. And then bring it back before council to have a prepared discussion about that issue, and then council can make a policy decision. And again, if it's something, a day-to-day type operation thing, I mean, that's, that's something that. Send it to the attention of the administration and let them handle it, it's not, it's really not for council's involvement, and council shouldn't be, and that's. You know, one of the areas that we are trying to tighten up and, and clea- keep council focused on their role, administration focused on their role. So that there's a healthy separation between the two, um, and less of the. Council involved in the day-to-day.
But some council have good friends.
Well, that's why we're doing this. That's, that's what this is for, so that the same rules apply to all council members.
I'm talking about the day-to-day involvement.
I guess I, I'm not following what you're, what you're referring.
Well, there's some people that are involved in a lot of the day-to-day and other decision-making, and everything doesn't come before the whole council. So that's where.
Again, I'm gonna need you to give me an example, what you're talking about.
Um, infrastructure, maybe water issues, those kind of things.
So there's an infrastructure committee that's made recommendations to city council, again.
No, 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 there's a lot of things that go on. Meetings and all those kinds of things.
So, those are subcommittee meetings.
Oh, they're, I, I don't think it's full committee meetings, but.
What else, yeah? Anything else on the order and procedures?
Social media, would that be in a?
We have a social media.
Be a policy, yeah, the board's driven the, the order procedure.
And we could reference that in here, if I didn't, I thought I did, but maybe not, that isn't. And we could reference that in here. If I didn't, I thought I did, but maybe not, that isn't. Actually, no, I didn't on this one.
He said that would go under for the correspondence talks on. Social media.
Uh, no, I was just asking if it was in here anywhere, it should be referenced. Not sure exactly where it would go. Oh, thanks, Bob.
Do you have a question about thirteen four? Three of the council members elected to one. We've had few instances where there were only. Three people here and I guess two voted yes on something, one voted no, is the.
So that doesn't. For a, for an ordinance, I mean, in fact, that's why the electric vehicle charging ordinance second reading is on tonight's agenda. Because when it was up for second reading, it was two to one vote. But there were only three council members present, so there wasn't a quorum of all elected council members, so that ordinance did not pass. There are certain types of expenditure type funds motions that require majority, but. In in no situation can it just be a two to one. For an ordinance.
Just an ordinance.
Yeah. There were resolutions that night that were passed at two to one. Correct.
Anything else with um? For this?
What was, uh, Scott, do you know what would be your wording for the social media one or?
It would just be a reference to this, the city's current social media policy. That's part of the employee handbook. Or I think it's a deck, that's an appendix to the employee handbook.
So let me ask you this. So say if I was to post. Like a flyer on on my Facebook page, right, and residents start talking in the chat. What does that mean for like the village?
It really, I mean, again. The. It's a hard separation of, you know, being a just a resident. And then being a council person, it's hard to take that hat off and interchange. You're always viewed in the eyes of your actions are as that of a council person like once you. Are elected to that position. Doesn't mean you can't have a life and post stuff on your social media. It just, it's really geared more towards. Really preventing open meeting violations and and FOIA. Backing up issues so that. Council doesn't as a quorum or start participating in a discussion. And it is easier to do on on things if if people are commenting or weighing in on it. Now, if it's a, you know, if it's a picture of you at the Tigers game and. Council members are coming, that's not a big deal. It's if it's an issue, again, an issue on policy or something that's going to come before council. That's where where you have to be extra cautious. The city does not back up, and we've talked about this before, this, the, the biggest group in the city is the villagers page, which is not a city. Authorized, supported, created page. In fact, I don't think the city is even active on it any longer. And that's because if the city were to comment or participate on that, all of those comments, everything has to be archived and then maintained. So that should, should the city receive a FOIA request with respect to. A comment that the city made or that the city received on one of their posts. They would then have to provide that information. So that was a considerable cost from. Cause initially, when I think. Three years ago, the the city was going to monitor and. Participate in some of those discussions on that. And then when we looked into the cost of it, it was significant, so. I think we started and what ended up happening was the volume base. Yeah, the prestructure was volume based and what we saw the volume that we were getting, especially around the two thousand nineteen election. We quickly exceeded that.
Thank you, Scott.
Is there any other questions for the? Hearing, then we'll move on to the fiscal year twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three budget.
Yes, mayor. Today or tonight, you will be brought to the budget to be approved on the regular council meeting. I have put the budget together the best that I could. I'm sure there will be some changes made once I'm used to the most straight comes on. We can do a vote by budget amendments and that, but we have brought, I have brought it down from the eight hundred thousand to a hundred and seventy one thousand. So I have done my due diligence to try to get down as low as I could. I don't think they have any questions about anything on budget or. That they would like to talk about or.
You just have a question, Pam. You sent this employee wages page?
Yes, that was set to.
Yeah, I'm Scott for public safety. He did list all names. I'm just wondering if you could tell me who who these people. I know you're the treasurer, city administrator with these two account clerk.
We don't have one at this time.
City clerk.
We don't have one at that time. We have an acting city clerk, which is Kelda.
Customer service.
That is Jacqueline or front counter person.
Manager comm and econ.
That is Suzie Sepp.
Governor operation.
That is Kelda's current position.
Special projects.
And it's Brittany for the DDA.
Code enforcement.
Ben Ronnie.
And.
Accounts payable, water.
Okay, so. You've been operating, oh, in rec part time, that wasn't even included on there?
That's at the bottom. Then we don't have rec person at this time.
Oh, director. Oh, you're calling them the directors. Okay.
Any other questions for the budget? You also have it on our meeting, so we can talk about it at that time. Okay. Next up is the senior luncheon, Purple Door Tea Room.
Yeah. So this brief memo together. This was something that had been advertised in the winter edition of the York Town. And the previous GDA special projects manager was. Taking on some of those parts and rough duties, which included coordinating. Senior outings and doing, they were generally doing, trying to do luncheons quarterly. And so this is like I said, been in the York Town, but a date to be determined in April. And Miss Delo had contacted me and really. And and had asked me, we're still gonna hold the event and she knew. How on her staff we were and I told her that that was my primary concern, that I wasn't able to. Coordinate this and this was. Before we had, before I hired the new. Before I had Brittany. And so she offered to. Organize and coordinate. And I was responsible for finding our driver, so. Roger Lynn volunteered his time to do that. We ended up having five to ten weeks. There was cost of five dollars for the bus. Once we were there, you know, having some conversation, I did reach out to Pam. Find out what exactly. What kind of budget we may have in parks and rest for senior specific events. We had, I believe it was approximately eight hundred dollars that had not been touched. So I made the decision to. Cover that expense from the Parks and Rec budget for our seniors. Think so. And that costs us two hundred and twenty two, two hundred and twenty two dollars and sixty cents. And participants all paid for the tip.
Thank you. Any discussion?
Yeah, some questions. As it said, meal is self paid, so I'm wondering. Why the decision was made to pay for everyone's lunch when five of the people were not all late for the. I, you know, so what, there might have been eight hundred dollars there. We have a deficit in our budget, so. You know, perhaps if you have advertised free lunch, we wouldn't have had a lot more people in. I don't. That kind of decision making is arbitrary and seems reckless to me, spending resident and taxpayer dollars.
On a senior luncheon that was advertised. I said, just to be civil and don't have to yell at her. You're welcome.
Again, it was. By people who majority were not resident, so.
But those senior luncheons, we do, if we had the person here, they usually would go to the CDBG. We would get the money back through the CDBG and they do not have to be later presents to get money back through the CDBG. Which we do have money sitting there, which.
The CDBG money that we're gonna give Southfield and some.
No, that is transportation. That is smart transportation. It was totally different than CDBG. This community block grant, our black grant.
And that's what was used to purchase some of that, used to purchase them in the past.
No, those are smart credit. You're confusing programs.
All of that, the money was.
The van.
It was seven thousand.
The van was through the smart money. And it was some of it. Thank you. But that was the van. But we, every year, the council has to decide how they're gonna do the funds. When the CBBG money, when it has to be divided amongst different things. Most of the time, the council will put it to the senior citizens and for programs or for luncheons or anything. And then we have to turn every seats to them and everything.
Well, I would just like to request that there be a little additional thought and planning going into some things like that. I know it's only. Two hundred and twenty two dollars, but a really big deal was made about three hundred dollar loss on the breakfast with the bunny, so. You know, every penny counts and. Instead of just making decisions on spur of the moment that benefit a few people. As opposed to, you know, other residents or all residents, I think. Talk about MML training, is there training on requirements regarding spending?
Is this still on, is this still about the senior season? Is this still now?
Greater than five thousand dollars require approval of council.
Thank you. And if we're gonna stay stick to our agenda, is there something else about the Purple Door Tea Room?
Yeah, that's just, I don't, I don't think that. That kind of decision making is is okay.
Okay.
So I'm not sure if there's anything that we can. Put in place.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else that has anything about the Purple Door Tea Room? Okay, hearing none, we're gonna go to public comment.
Mayor, can I, can I add each of this for this Michigan homeowners assistance?
Oh, yes, 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 yes.
Today, the water billing clerk gave me this. Agreement, a participation agreement. It's the Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund. Michigan State Housing Development Authority Provider Participation Agreement. And I would like to have this put onto the council packet today for the regular meeting. Nishtha has created a federally funded program under its Michigan Homeowners Assistance Fund Program. And it has, it's established for our financial hardship associated with the coronavirus pandemic. By providing funding to eligible entities and it's to help the residents that have had trouble. Financially, to help them with their water bills, they're, so I would like to have this on. We have had about six. Residents contact us within the last week for this and. I thought that this was kind of important since it is to benefit our residents that are having a hardship, to put this on the agenda for tonight. I did not want to hold off until our next meeting in July, so I want to bring this to your attention. And if anybody has any questions about it, I will be happy to answer them.
When would it go into effect?
As soon as we get the agreement, they get it and they've got to give us a number for our residents so that they can sign up with the number.
Okay.
So probably within about two days.
Okay.
Where is the section that addresses water?
I have that, I do not know where the sense of. Part of what water is, but I do know it is water. Specifically, we're calling for water and we have talked to the Nishtha on it. And Nishtha has told them that we have to attend the city to get a number.
Second, whereas, as does describe these. Does describe it, the purpose of preventing homeowner mortgages, the link with these defaults, people. Foreclosures, lots of utilities or home energy services and placement, displacement of qualified. Experience and financial hardship after January twenty first to twenty twenty. Through qualified, some related to mortgages and housing.
So this is for someone who is the.
They have to qualify.
Utilities are gonna be shut off because they got to save the water. Okay.
So we can add that, someone just has to make a motion. You got it, okay. Is there any public comments? Speakers are limited to three minutes. Anyone in the audience here? No one? And anyone online that would like to speak, you can raise your hand. And again, you have three minutes. And this commentary. I did receive a. Public comment. Does anybody that have their hand raised?
No.
Says, my name is Elaine Mantenin. I am a resident whose daughter just finished her second year at McIntyre Elementary in South of Public Schools. I have been involved with trying to improve the relationship between the city and the school district since my daughter was in preschool. I worked, worked with school employees, city staff and the previous city council liaison. For the school district to work or on improvements for several years. I've asked councilman, councilperson Miller publicly in meetings and also via email about her progress as South of Public Schools liaison for months. She's either unwilling or unable to provide a single detail about anything she has accomplished during her time as SPS liaison. Or plans to accomplish in the future. Her email replies to me have consistently been insulting and offensive. For example, when I express a concern about the lack of maintenance of the paths to the school during icy winter conditions. Councilperson Miller accused me of requesting special treatment for my kids. In addition to being inappropriate response from an elected official to the resident they were elected to represent. This is absolutely absurd. A safe path to school is not a special privilege and my kids are not the only ones who use that path to school. Councilperson Miller has consistently made it clear that she's not here to represent all residents, but rather only the ones she likes. She has also shown a clear unwillingness to fulfill her role as SPS liaison. How in the world is it honestly allowed that a councilperson can respond to a resident's concern with insults? How can we allow someone to hold a position with no accountability? Who went ask about her progress of absolutely nothing to share? I asked councilperson Kness about her position as recreational liaison and she facilitated, facilitated a meeting with the Recreation Advisory Committee. And city staff and we planned two trivia nights for the fall. If anyone asks Mayor Pro Tim Cantor about the infrastructure committee, he will talk to them for hours on end. Can you imagine the outrage if instead he just replied, I don't like you, like councilperson Miller has since do. We cannot continue to allow this if we want to move our city forward. I would like to see another councilperson who's willing to do the work, build this position. Thank you, Elaine. Oh, no, thank you. Anyone raise their hands for comment?
No.
Okay, moving to mayor and council comments. One thing that was brought to my attention is that the South of Lake Optimist Club. Is looking for a representative from our board or from the council. Just in case someone's in here who hasn't been accepted to a board or put on board yet. So just let me know so I can get back with Cheryl Thames to let her know about that. And of course. Oh, God, today is only Monday. I was gonna say tomorrow, Wednesday, the concerts start, which is extremely exciting. And I know that we've had some discussion of what you can pass out there. Remember that the park is a public park. You know, and the residents pay taxes for it, so. I don't think that we necessarily can stop anyone. But I would just suggest not to be intrusive and, you know, I guess walking in front of them. Um, but I would just suggest not to be intrusive in, you know, I guess walking in front of some of the concert goers or being disruptive. That's all I have, any other councilperson?
Yes. Extremely interesting, uh. Comment from Mrs. Mantenin, because our last exchange was on May nineteenth. And I thought we had a very good risk of communication back and forth, she thanked me for my email, she was glad to hear we were in agreement that marketing could be better. There were multiple things that we had talked about. Um, I told her that I had spent several hours in a focus group with the school district, um, talking about some of the issues with the community and. Some things that residents were looking for, I reached out to the McIntyre principal, and she told me that she, um, is retiring, so. Um, I again reached out to her and I have not heard back, so it was a little difficult to make, um, any plans. When the leader of the building, uh, won't be there, so again, I'm quite surprised at that. At that communication, because I thought that we were in a good place. Uh, also, um. I was just wondering what's happening with the sidewalk program, I know several months ago the sidewalks were marked. Uh, now all of a sudden I have marks on my driveway, and so I'm not sure the period in the last couple of days. I'm not sure what's, um. What's happening, I thought the. Plan was in place and the statements were sent out.
I, estimates were sent out, um. The sidewalk replacement, year two of the sidewalk replacement program. Um, will begin, I mean, technically it's already began in the DDA, um, but they will be, um. Really beginning work on year two, um, probably after the Fourth of July holiday.
Okay, so why are these things being marked late now?
It's in many cases, we have, um, remarked, since that is water soluble paint, so.
No, they weren't, they were not marked, so it wasn't a remark, it's a, the new mark, and I thought. Something else was being done on. Our street that interfered or on our block that interfered with the paving, so it was.
I would have to look into that specifically.
Okay.
To find out what markings on your driveway are, um, if they are, they. If they're just sidewalk flags or if it's the actual approach, um, those are different things, so I can look into that.
Yes, I had a conversation with the, uh. Um, engineer bumped into him while he was out marking, while he was out remarking, and he had indicated that there have been several instances where. Um, things were either not noticed or. Or not consistent with, uh, what you call the reports that you guys have.
IDRs.
The IDRs, that weren't consistent with the IDRs, so they they marked them to make sure that they were consistent with the reports that they have. Uh, and then the. Work that you're referring to in terms of the paving, that's, that's the water main, you guys, uh, I think, believe your street is is getting a water main next year. Uh, and then the paving will either be at the end of that year or the following year.
There's. I'm sorry, what?
But that doesn't have anything to do with.
But does, it doesn't impact the culled driveway and. Are yours just sidewalk corners, or is it?
No, I have no, I replaced all my sidewalks the last time.
I'm just saying about your mark, the markings that you're referring to, are they? In, are they sidewalk flags, or are they, is it your approach?
It's the approach, okay.
It's your culvert paving up through through your job.
Is it doing what?
Is it giving?
I don't have any problems with flooding or anything, I don't know.
I'll look into that.
So I'm, I'm assuming I'm not the only one, then, if they were going back around doing.
Well, if it's your approach, that's different. Um. And that, that's my thing, I will have to look into that.
Okay, and if it is the approach, how is that, how is that handled?
It depends on the program, that's, if it. If it is, if your culvert is bound to be noncompliant, which in the vast majority of cases is on its heating. Then it is your responsibility, financial responsibility to. Replace. You have that culvert replaced. Um. Most of the time, um, we have been doing the ditch and culvert replacements. Um, in conjunction with paving, it may be happening in the area, but. Um, again, I will have to look into this.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments?
No. Same I for the meeting.
Okay. Um. Then I would entertain an enjoyment for, was that fifteen minutes? Fourteen minutes?
Okay, sorry, oh, I'm.
Okay, so.
I'm sorry, I thought, I thought we were, I thought we were. I did mix up on the timing, I thought you were, I thought we were over, over our time, so might as well do it now, wait people later. Um, so in the past, we've had, uh, past couple of years, I know Cheryl has contact, when she was here, had contacted Tringali. Uh, on a couple of different occasions because of their zigzagging approach and blocking traffic. Um, today I've had multiple, uh, uh, issues with with Tringali three times while I was out. Um, they were doing the the Z pattern with cars backed up on both sides. Uh, to make matters worse, what they were doing is they had a two-person crew. And they would stop, you know, they would park, block the entire road. The driver would get out of the vehicle, the driver would go in the front of the vehicle and get cans on one side, the guy in the back would go on the other side. So I mean, further even delaying the amount of time that people were in there. Um. And then I also noticed, um, when they came down my street, uh, I saw on three different houses, well, they did the same thing there as well, so that's for the fourth time. Um, and then they, on three different houses, when they were dumping the trash, they spilled trash all over the yard, I literally saw the, the. The sanitation worker looked down, looked at it, put the can away, and then they drove off to the next one where it happened again and again, so I was out there picking up all this. Trash, I know, um, uh, at one point, the city Southfield actually called Tringali and, um, you know, called the. Uh, owner in, because they were having a similar issue, uh, because they were actually at that meeting when they called them in by chance. But if we need to do that, then we need to do that, because it's just, it's not appropriate for them to be doing that.
Didn't we have him sitting right here? Last year? I thought when we.
Yeah, but that wasn't, that wasn't, wasn't that something else, though, wasn't that?
The owner of Tringali, wasn't it?
But wasn't that, was that about contract, or?
I thought it was about the same issue, and he, I thought he provided us with his direct contact, should we have that problem again?
Right, I, I know he said that, you're right, because then he was talking about the GPS location of the truck and everything, but. Somebody needs to contact them, because they're, they're, they're not following the what, the way that they're supposed to be working.
They also, um, every Monday, they, one of the people from Tringali do come into the office to find out what complaints we have for the day. So when people are calling, we are giving them those complaints, and they are going back to take care of those issues, so if you have called us today, we'd be able to probably send somebody back out there to pick up that garbage.
Okay, well, anything else? Are you holding until?
Yep.
Okay. Well, then I, um, will adjourn, this, me either ask for a adjournment, I think I just adjourned.
It's adjourned.